Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the, was it July 10th? July 10th legislative session to order. I'd like to welcome everybody. I would ask you at this time to please silence all electronic devices. If during the meeting, an emergency should arise, we ask that you exit the room, make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. Should that exit be blocked for some reason, please exit the room, make a left and a right and go down the stairs. If you need any assistance, we'd be glad to provide it to you, just ask. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Clarence Polk of the Unity Christian Fellowship of Salisbury to the podium for our invocation.
Amen. Let us pray. Our Father in our God, we come this afternoon to say thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your never-ending love. We recognize that we're here today not because of any goodness of our own, but because of your mercy, your grace, and your love, Lord. And you said in your word that if we should acknowledge you in all our ways, that you would direct our path. So we acknowledge who you are today, that you are our almighty God with all power in your hands, and that we live and move and have our being in you, and that without you we can do nothing. So we ask you now, you might have complete control of all, that it's said tonight that you might be glorified. We gather here tonight humbly, in your presence and in your name, to do those things that are pleasing in your sight, that we might enhance the lives of the citizens of this city. Bless the mayor, all the council members, and their families, and to deliberate the circumstances and issues facing this community. Help them to act with brotherly, sisterly love, and always without a contentious spirit. Moreover, where and when they cannot agree, help them to recognize the right of the majority to govern. But not only this, bless every person and family in this entire community, this city, this county, this state, and this nation. And we will continue to give you the praise, the glory, and all the honor in your name and for your glory we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Polk. Appreciate it. Please rise now and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have a presentation this evening.
Yes, Mr. President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. Reverend Polk, thank you. We have a special guest in the audience, and we're very proud this evening to acknowledge his presence. We didn't realize we had such a talent among us. So I'm going to take a second here to read a certificate of recognition, but I'd like to have our special guest come stand with me if I can, Mr. Alfonso Henry, if you wouldn't mind, before I explain why you're here. First and foremost, want to acknowledge that you got a Bennett shirt on, and I'm very appreciative of that. Go Clippers. Secondly, it's with congratulations upon receiving the Lifetime Service to Wrestling Award and your induction into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame and Museum in Stillwater, Oklahoma, class of 2017, that you are commended for your contributions, not only to work and to community, but with 17 years of dedicated service as a city employee, beginning February 1st, 2000, and your longtime investment in the youth of Salisbury and the greater Salisbury area through coaching and mentoring youth teams in the sport of wrestling. I set my hand in the seal of the city of Salisbury this 10th day of July 2017 and say congratulations and thank you for all you've done. Congratulations. A Hall of Famer.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I have an idea. It may be good if we had maybe a little match in you two.
Yeah, you set me up on that one.
I would just think, you don't have to hurt him. Just.
Is there a weight limit section?
A cage match in there.
Congratulations.
I couldn't wear that, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Okay, down to business.
Then I shall go, Mr. Council President. Mr. Council President, I moved on the adoption of the legislative agenda that we move ordinance number 2429 from the agenda and move it to the July 17th City Council Work Session.
Second.
We have motion and second to remove that item and transfer it to the Work Session on the 17th. Any discussion?
That's a 4:30?
4:30. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I want to entertain a motion to approve the legislative, to modify the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Will those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening, Mr. Heath and council, mayor, Ms. Florence.
And all those assembled.
Everybody. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the April 25th, 2017 budget meeting minutes, the May 2nd, 2017 budget meeting minutes, and May 16th, 2017 budget meeting minutes. Resolution number 2756, authorizing the Director of Public Works to sign the grant agreement and accept a grant of $35,000 from the Maryland Energy Administration for conversion of city-owned streetlights to energy-efficient LED bulbs to reduce the energy demand and increase energy efficiency. Resolution number 2757, accepting grants awarded through a community legacy grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for funds to provide rehabilitation grants to owners of businesses located in downtown Salisbury for interior and/or exterior improvements to their permanent structures in which their businesses are housed. And resolution number 2758, accepting an endowment grant fund grant from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the Salisbury City Park Bridge. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the consent questions?
Can we ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
On resolution 2756, the light bulbs, I scanned this very quickly, and I apologize if I missed it, how many will that do in public works?
32.
The mic left.
I think it was 32.
Is it 32?
I think it was 32, if my recollection serves.
Do we know approximately where they will go?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, I just, there's that thing when we start to do them and you go down a street, and one is one color and the old ones are another color. And then the other question I was going to ask, just as a, can you check and see, sometimes those, it's like when they change the freon in the air conditioners of the car, and it was nice, but it wasn't like the old days, you know, where we blow a gale out of there, you know, CFC free or whatever that was called. I was just wondering whether or not anybody had consulted with the police department about how far it goes on the street, where they will go, and how that will help. Certainly, streetlights are something that help with our policing, so just have a conversation, you don't have to report back. I wish, those were just the thoughts I had about it.
And in fact, it's tweakable?
You get to get up after the wrestling match?
Directional. Exactly. Tweakable, like my back.
Right.
But yeah, we can adjust.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2427 for the second reading.
Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY17 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the recovery and recycling of brass shell casings at the Salisbury Police Range to purchase service weapons. Whereas members of the Salisbury Police Department have retrieved, stored, and recycled the brass shell casings from all firearms training at the Salisbury Police Range, whereas recycling of these brass shell casings through Delmarva Recycling has produced a monetary return for the efforts put forth, and whereas Delmarva Recycling has paid the city $1,850.40, which is placed in a general fund, and whereas the city police department has used for the funds received from the recycled brass shell casings in the small tools account 21021-456009, which is used in part to purchase service weapons for new police officers. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows: increased general fund revenue, Delmarva Recycling, by $1,850.40; increased police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2427, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2428 for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of fiscal year 2017 general fund to appropriate funds for attorney's fees, whereas the city has projected an amount of attorney's fees expected for fiscal year 2017, and whereas the city previously approved this amount for a budget amendment at this time last year, and whereas there have been additional unexpected projects for the last quarter of fiscal year 2017 causing an increase in legal fees, and whereas the city of Salisbury's projection indicates an increase of $38,000 is needed in the FY17 appropriations for 17000-513301 city attorney in order to meet the projected requirements for the legal fees for the remainder of FY2017. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget be amended as follows: increased current year surplus, count 01000-469810 by $38,000; increased the attorney fee account 17000-513301 by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion to approve ordinance number 2428 for the second reading. Both those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2430 for the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton.
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's water sewer capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for projects in the lawsuit proceeds pool by using impact fees and transferring unallocated capital project funds into the water sewer operating account. Whereas ordinance number 2248 established rates for water and sewer capacity fees to in part fund the Hampshire Road lift station and Fitzwater Street lift station projects, and whereas the funds are available in the sewer impact fund account to fund the capacity-related portions of the above referenced projects. And whereas ordinance number 2287 provided funding for the fiscal year 2015 budget and included allocating lawsuit proceed funds to fund each of the above referenced projects. And whereas during the preparation of the fiscal year 2018 budget, the city identified the need for additional operating funding in the amount of $1,600,000 in the water sewer operating account, and whereas the capacity-related portion of $700,000 of the Hampshire Road lift station project will be funded with sewer impact fees instead of lawsuit proceed funds, and whereas the capacity-related portion of $500,000 of the Fitzwater Lift Station project will be funded with sewer impact fees instead of the lawsuit proceed funds. And whereas a transfer of $1,600,000 will be made into the water sewer operating account from the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund, which is otherwise known as the lawsuit proceeds pool, using $1,200,000 made available by the transfer of the above sewer impact fees and $400,000 of existing unallocated lawsuit proceeds. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's capital projects fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. And there is a chart there that was prepared by Mr. Corddry to undo the budget of lawsuit proceeds for the above two projects and transfer the corresponding proceeds and appropriation to unallocated. And basically there, what you've got in that project description was, is the Hampshire Road Lift Station, which I previously mentioned, the Fitzwater Lift Station, and basically the money that has been allocated is being pulled out of those accounts, and then down below, the expenditures from those accounts are also being negated. And then on the next page, it's the allocation from the appropriate funds, so as not to cause any difficulty. And this will result, in the end, to move 1.6 million of unallocated appropriation from construction to the transfer to water and sewer fund accounts. And that will, there will be allocated to construction account 97010-513026-99999, a negated $1,600,000, and an expenditure from unallocated to transfer to the water and sewer fund, an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments?
If I could.
Go ahead.
I see the first one. No, I see the second one. The second one is what we did during budget. Correct. The first one, I guess my question is, I'm not sure if it's my first one or my second one, to be honest with you. I, no, let's go with the second one, I apologize. The second one is what we did with the budget. Those I didn't think were lawsuit proceeds. I thought they were, they were funds collected when people did annex them. They were, those were fees that went into capacity. And then my question is, is about the capacity, and with the capacity that we have at the wastewater treatment plant, is this for capacity at Fitzwater and Hampshire? And do we need more capacity there, or is there just something wrong there that needs to be fixed? Having been inside both of those lift stations, both during freezing weather and when it was really hot, I just, those are my questions.
Sure. I think, and if I could just preface, that a man can explain why the lawsuit proceeds piece is included at all.
Right.
Because of the gap that was not met by the ability to transfer any other funds.
Gotcha.
That we hoped at the time, budget time, would be a possibility.
The last time we met, we had talked about using all capacity fees to transfer to the operating fund, but where capacity fees are dedicated to capacity issues, we stepped back after the meeting and started looking at, are there any other ways we could do this by putting capacity fees to use for what they're actually supposed to be used for? The last time that we passed our current capacity fees, it was actually in May 2013. And at that time, these projects were on the books, and they were considered in that capacity ordinance. The Fitzwater Street Lift Station project is about 20% capacity-related. It's not a full, you know, we're not doing that project only because of capacity, most of it's maintenance. The Hampshire Road Lift Station project has about a 50% capacity component. So that's what you're seeing here, the $500,000 for Fitzwater and $700,000 for Hampshire are the capacity portions allocated to those two projects. So those projects were originally going to be funded using only lawsuit proceeds. After our last meeting where we were looking for, how do we transfer 1.6 million, we thought, okay, let's, let's apply the capacity fees where they belong, to the capacity portions of those two projects, which adheres to the ordinance that we passed in 2013, and then we won't need the lawsuit proceeds for that 1.2 million. So we could use lawsuit proceeds to balance the operating, because essentially, that's an unrestricted cash account. We can utilize those proceeds however, however we see fit. We had chosen at the time to use them for water and sewer projects, and we had picked four, of which these are two of the four, but we could use capacity fees for those projects instead. So that's how we, we came about doing it this way. And then the gap between that 1.2 million and the 1.6 we needed was another 400,000. The lawsuit proceeds were not fully allocated. We had a little bit over a million left that was to be allocated for contingency for any project, so that's where we're pulling that other 400,000 from.
Just thinking out loud, off the top of my head, I'm not, I don't know whether or not I would have supported taking 1.6 million from the lawsuit proceeds to put into the water and sewer operating during budget time. That comes from a completely different place. So my, my question or my thought is, that means that that money that was in the capacity thing is still there?
Well, no, 1.2 of it now is going to these two projects.
Is going to go to those other two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But then, do you want to know?
But we don't need, my question would be, we don't need those lawsuit proceeds. I know we can use them for anything, but we're sure we don't need them for the big project where all this is going.
We have other contingency money for the wastewater treatment plant. So the first, the first source we go to for the wastewater plant is our MDE grants and loans, of which they allow us 5% contingency across the project, and that's of the grant loan eligibility. Right now, we've had five change orders, and we're tracking a little bit under 1% contingency. I do have some other ones coming up, so I know we'll use more of that 5%, but that's our first source. And then we still have bond money that we had allocated for the treatment plant project. So we have, right now, a little bit over $2 million in bonds dedicated to the treatment plant. So those would be our first sources of contingency for that project.
So how much, let me ask this question. How much is left, having lived through the lawsuit and the agreement there in Ocean City, for how much money we did receive from the company? How much is left of that 11 point some odd million?
Yes, so what's left, I'm going to tell you what's unallocated. Because I have some.
You're going to use Keith Cordry words now, aren't you?
Right.
Well, there we go. I'll be completely confused again.
We have some earmarked for projects that we haven't spent yet, like Paleo Wealth Race. So some of it was allocated for that. So unallocated, what's left, if this goes through tonight, would be just shy of 800,000. It's 794,000 of litigation.
I would just ask you, are, I don't, are you comfortable with switching it up like that? Okay, I'm good too. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you for the history of what we lived through together.
You're a brave man. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2430, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2431 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Okay, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment to the schedule of the maximum towing fee, whereas chapter 5.64 towing companies has been adopted by the mayor and city council, and whereas chapter 5.64 calls for the fees and charges for the police-directed tows and related storage of towed vehicles to be established by ordinance from time to time, whereas the ordinance 2425 setting the FY2018 fee ordinance included an error setting the vehicle, accident vehicle tow to be 160, and thus incorrectly overrides the increase to 200 that was established in ordinance 2377 in 2016, and whereas ordinance 2425 with incorrect fee amount calls has an effective date of October 1st, 2017, and whereas changing the fee back to 200 prior to October 1st, 2017 will result in no period of time where the fee is set in error to $160. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the schedule of maximum towing and storage fees be modified as follows. Number one, the fee for accident vehicle tow is hereby updated from 160 to $200.
So my question is, we have been charging 200, but the ordinance still said 160?
That schedule that was put together, apparently picked up the old figure in that budget.
And that doesn't, doesn't put us in any, having lived through the change in the towing ordinance as well during those years?
We even said at the time that that schedule was passed, that it was done, you know, to try, attempt to include everything, and if anything was missed, there would be additional legislation. And if it had been left off entirely, the 200 would have applied anyway, the way it was worded, but because it mistakenly said 160 in that version, this needs to be corrected before October 1st.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President. And the ordinance that was, that council passed, the 2377 ordinance in 2016, March 2016, that was sent because, I guess, and this was long before I was involved, but I guess there was conversations with all of the towing companies that, you know, there would eventually be some escalated, you know, max of caps on, because this is not what we charge, that this is the maximum that they're allowed to charge for a police-directed tow to the citizen who's getting towed. And, and it didn't get, ever get escalated. So to correct that, there was a $40 jump in the max.
And they can't come back legally and say it said this, because your legislation wrote it to some of this?
Right. It was anticipated that we would either not catch something or that a mistake might be made, and we were allowed to make corrections at any time during the year.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2431, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That concludes the items on the agenda. We have requests for public comment. We have four requests. I would ask that, and they're all on the same topic, so I would ask that if someone is going to support exactly what the person prior to them says, would you please just state that you're in full support of that, or make comments that you don't agree with? And we'd like to limit your comments, since we have a closed session immediately following, we'd like to limit your comments to about four minutes apiece, and to make your point. So first up, Lynn Bratton. Good evening.
Lynn Bratton, I live at 303 South Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to participate in the dialogue on proposed fencing ordinance. Thank you, Mayor Day, for reaching out to me on Friday and listening personally to my concerns. Thank you to all the council members and to you, Mayor, for seeing opportunities for modifications and changes. With all the modifications and possible amendments that have been presented coming so quickly, I did respectfully request that this ordinance be sent to work session, and I appreciate that that is what the motion meant in today for further vetting. I believe research on the life expectancy of vinyl coated chain link fencing, added cost of this finish, as well as added expense to install chain link fencing that can be fitted with slats has not been fully examined, may not have been fully examined and included in this decision-making process. When planning to use slats, the entire fence must be upgraded, as it will need to be able to withstand winds, since weather will no longer be able to blow through it. My personal research found that vinyl adds about 20 to 30% to the cost, and using a grade of fencing suitable for slating could potentially double the cost of installing that type of chain link fence. I do appreciate that perhaps welded wire or substantial wire fencing could be allowed on the perimeter of a property. This is a good alternative for any property owner looking for a quick to install reasonably priced fence to encourage privacy and discourage trespassing. And I think allowing residency opportunity to surround personal spaces within their yards with fencing materials listed is in the best interest of all concerned. The use of the term other scrap material, however, is vague and could be open for interpretation. Again, I sincerely ask that the council take this ordinance to work session, and I appreciate that that was the motion earlier, and taking into consideration information from all stakeholders be considered. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Barbara Schultz.
Well, I'm not an acronist, and this is the first time I've ever done this, but I think if you see something that's wrong, you should say something, and so I'm saying something.
Excuse me, Mrs. Schultz, could you just go behind the, and we'll make the mic your So we can record you for posterity.
This is my dog Duchess. She's an Irish setter, and I put up a chain link fence in my backyard for my dog, and the chain link fence is brown, because my house is brown. It's been up there since 2003, and it's almost maintenance-free. I have, I have vegetables growing on my fence. I have cucumbers and tomatoes and things like that. So I don't want any strips or staves or anything put down inside my fence because the air needs to go through and the sprinkler system needs to go through. And my dog needs to be able to monitor what goes on at Shoemaker Pond. This is a picture of my prize-winning cucumber on my fence. And this shows you why you don't want to have staves sticking down through your fence, cutting off the light and cutting off the sprinkler system. This fence belongs to the people next door, and it's an expensive vinyl fence. It has mold all the way across the bottom, and he has to go out and power wash it frequently. Behind me is the Shoemaker Manor Association. And they put up this wooden fence, which is molded over and falling down. But this is the kind of fence I think that you're planning on approving. It's a wooden fence. And they ran a water line all down through the bottom part of the fence. So I think that my fence looks a whole lot better than this. And I would like to see us not tell people that they can't have the kind of fence that they need in their backyards.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Next up is Richard Insley.
My name is Richard Insley. I don't think I can do any better than this lady just did. This is my second time up here in the last two or three weeks. I'm not necessarily proud of that. And one might get the impression that my frequent visits are because I like to be on the opposite side of issues from y'all. And nothing could be further from the truth. Actually, I want you to know that I'm very supportive of the majority of your endeavors. I know y'all are working hard to try to improve the city of Salisbury. I know you're putting in a lot of time and effort and work, and I can tell you that I for one appreciate that. Occasionally, there'll be something that I think that needs to be said, and I am not bashful about doing that. So I appreciate your indulging me. I'm not going to review the attributes of chain link fence. I think you all saw my letter, and I think I pretty thoroughly did that. In my opinion, this fence business would not be on the top 50 list if you asked citizens of Salisbury to write a list of the things that they see as most important problems in Salisbury. I don't think this would make the top 50 list. For anybody that's been in the military service, and Jake, I know that includes you and maybe some others, one of the first things, there's a couple of things you learn pretty early on from your superiors. One of them is that if it moves, salute it, and if it doesn't move, you paint it. One of the other things is if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And that's how I see this ordinance. I've been told that a concern is that chain link fence and other wire fence lowers property values. I've been in the real estate business for over 50 years. I have a degree in real estate. Over that period of time, I have bought and sold an awful lot of property. And along with that, I have seen an awful lot of property appraisals. Many of you have probably seen appraisals. If you haven't, just look at your property tax assessments. They're similar, they're in abbreviated form. But an appraisal will show the value of the land, the lot. It'll show the value of the dwelling or building. And then it will also include attributes such as a fireplace or a basement or a porch or a garage, or outbuildings, and for that matter, fences. And all of those items are listed as additional value. They add to the appraisal. Fireplace might add $5,000. Fence might add $1,000. And I can tell you, in all of my years of seeing appraisals, I have never yet seen the first appraisal that when it came to fences, it deducted. Fence is an asset. And probably one of the reasons is that if you don't like the fence, you can remove it. I know homeownership is a big goal here in the city of Salisbury. And I have a concern that, I know you're trying to do things that will increase homeownership, but I have a concern that in some instances, maybe such as this, that you might be shooting yourself in the foot. The reason I say that is that people spend a lot of money when they buy a home. For most people, it's probably the largest expenditure they'll ever make in their lives. And when they spend that much money, they want to do it their way. They don't want someone else to tell them that they can do this or they can't do that. They don't want people telling them what to do. When people are looking at the city versus the county, and do I buy a home in the city or do I buy a home in the county? You know, fence might be one of those things, since it's been on the front page of the paper, that people consider and say, well, you know, buy a house in the city. I can't put the fence up that I want. Buy a house in the county, whole different story. There's other things, little things. Buy a house in the city, you know, I can be the beneficiary of letters about grass growing in the cracks of the sidewalk or things like that. These are, these are petty aggravations, but they're aggravations nonetheless. And so my message, I guess, would be stick to the really big stuff, the important stuff, and these things that are not really a big deal, just avoid them and concentrate your attention on the larger problems. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I hope you'll consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Insley. Next up, Brett Hopkins.
Hi, Brett Hopkins, Fairfax Station Enterprises. And I'd like to just echo what my three predecessors said. And just to say one more thing, thank you for your service. And I too feel like whenever I come up here, it's in an adversarial position. I guess there's no other way to do government and citizen response. I mean, but since we don't really know each other, I'll just take 30 seconds and say, whenever I communicate, being former military, being in the private sector, owning and operating businesses, having 40 people work for me, I appreciate very direct communication. And like the people that work with us, they all know my style now and don't take offense to it. It's get to the point quickly. So whenever I communicate to the government, one-on-one or to the group, don't think I'm attacking you. I'm just trying to go for, for maximum communication in the short amount of time, okay? I'll leave with, my position always is we want maximum flexibility, maximum choice. We understand that that can cause problems. And, and we appreciate being in the community, what it takes to get a community to look in a way that adds value to the entire community, whether you're a homeowner or a renter or business owner. So I would just try and say, consider my, what I submitted in writing, because it echoes what my predecessor said, and it increases maximum choice of, of what people want, whether they're a homeowner, like Mr. Insley said, or a renter. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. I have one more, and forgive me, I'm having trouble. Mabel, is it Mabel?
Yes, sir.
And how do you pronounce your last name?
Marshall.
Marshall.
Glandes.
Gotcha, okay, that's, okay, I see.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening. I had to get on the phone earlier to find a who, where. First I thought it was county, then I was told it's city. Whether medical marijuana will be distributed on Snow Hill Road, 400? No one knows. They said it's city's area. So this is why I'm here.
Yeah, just dispensary.
Dispensary, yeah. I'm very much against it, of where it's located. Here. Make it short and plain. I do not care to have it in the area, not near Shore Up or Prince Street. Schools. Me, myself, I can deal with it. But no. And the problem it's gonna bring in the area. We got enough problems now, don't we? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would recognize the delegate in the back of the room, Carl Anderton, and maybe we can work with him to find out where the state granted it, where it is and everything that's going, going to be going on with the facility. I know it's scheduled for there.
Mr. Mayor.
If I could, two things. One, just to Ms. Marshall's point, we should probably reach out to the state to find out, because the state licenses them. So we should find out where they're going, where they're planned to be, where they are. You know, I don't think we have been approached. Delegate Anderton, you want to come up?
Delegate, sure. Can I do one thing while you're on your way up? Delegate, Mr. Delegate, while you're on your way up. Can I do one thing? Well, I just want to, I want to acknowledge our two new deputy city administrators that are in the room, Allison Poulter and Andy Kitzro. They've sat through the meeting, I just wanted to acknowledge them.
Your intestinal fortitude, you two.
I miss Andy already, but the county.
Yeah, your intestinal fortitude, you two, for what you have put up with in the online community over the last couple of weeks and done it with grace and style, and sometimes saying nothing, which I learned, it took a long time. But you all have, have done that with grace. I did.
Did you?
I did. I love that online community.
All three of them. So real quick, Delegate Carl Anderton, it's good to be here in council meeting tonight. Real quick, one thing, real quick, housekeeping. We've been having some conversations with MTA about the Folk Festival next year. So I think we're at the point where they're ready to kind of sit down with you guys and, and see how they can help out. So, so that's.
Send buses.
Yeah, right on. Send buses, definitely. The dispensaries, I'm not really sure. I think this might be an opportunity, if there hasn't been a, you know, if this hasn't been finalized, where you can actually create, you know, a zoning layer where you want them to be located. You know, like you have, you know, highway commercial, or you have community business, or you have, you know, R2 residential, or your, you know, multifamily residential. You can create a spot in the city, you know, where if they want to open one, they have to be in that, that zone.
And the state law wouldn't supersede that. All my life has been that the state law supersedes the city law and the county law. Can you, can we work together on that?
Yeah, we can find out for sure, absolutely.
Tomorrow morning?
Yeah, but, you know, the thing is, the, the, the horse may be out of the barn on this one, but you can do that for any future ones, because I, I know there are going to be a couple more that are going to be granted, licenses granted down here.
Just out of curiosity, shouldn't the city have a formal notification process?
I would assume they go through the planning process like any other business that opens. Again, that's my, that's my assumption. This is the first one, so we're creating a wheel as we go with this. You know, I'm, you know, I think it's interesting that we were granted a dispensary, but as the number one ag-producing county in the state, we weren't granted a growing facility. I still scratch my head at that one a little bit. Yeah, you know. But nonetheless, you know, if, if that hasn't been granted and the leases haven't been signed or anything, I think you have the opportunity to kind of, to kind of pinpoint where you want these, these dispensaries located. And I have to agree, I think in that neighborhood, it's probably not the most conducive place. You'd want them in, either, either down where the medical doctors' offices are located, you know, or.
I think the wheels may be turning, but I take the lug nuts off the wheel.
Yeah, right. So, but anyway, so that, yeah, so that, I can, you know, point me in a direction. I'll, I'll, I'll do whatever I can to help you guys figure out where we are with that. And it's good seeing so many of you MML this, last, last week? Last week, two weeks ago.
Two weeks, this is two weeks, two weeks.
Yeah.
We saw you at Red White and Boom.
Red White and Boom, yeah. I didn't see Peaches there though, but I saw, you know, everybody else there. It was good. It's good turnout. And so, but it's, it's good being here tonight again. And so just let me know the direction to travel, and you get the high five for that.
Thanks.
Right on.
That's, must be something funny about that, but anyway. Thank you, Carl, appreciate it.
Mr. Heath? I do have a couple, it does. I do have a couple of questions about the upcoming agenda on the 17th.
Okay.
We've now moved fences to the 17th. Now that has Riverside Circle Design Update, Targeted Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, City Electronic Electricity Accounts, Budget Amendment for the Main Street Master Plan and Update.
Yeah, my recommendation, and we're going to talk, is that we're going to remove something tomorrow with the agenda meeting and then make it a.
One of the things in Ms. Glanz was, and, and the clerk were so sweet to get this information to me, was an update on the number of things that have come through due to us dropping, dropping or doing a moratorium on those fees. I don't know if I was reading it correctly, so that's why I'm, I'm asking if we could talk about it. I think I only saw three on there. Three things that have come through, or four. And I wanted to introduce a discussion about whether or not that's going fast enough for us or whether or not we, we could be doing more. The other thing on there is the electricity, and, and the mayor did let me know that it's 50 street lights. So when we have this discussion with Mr. Anderson, I'd like to be able to pull out of my pocket the savings on those 50 street lights so that I could get him to put it into his spreadsheet and remember that it's there. So that one, I have at least a million questions on that one. Whatever the state of Maryland grant is from Theo Williams, we can just take that. And that's Theo, so it must be okay. And you have no smoking and criminal nuisance. So if you could split that up, and does the clerk have any idea when we'll get this information? Because if it comes on Friday, there really isn't going to be enough time. Apparently it was due to the administration on the 7th and the clerk on the 10th, so that was today. I'm just, for the sake of, if you're going to move it, thank you so that we can, we can really prepare very well for some of those and put some of those off a little further. That's just my suggestion.
Tomorrow you will handle that.
And there are at least three major time-consuming ones that we can roll that are not as time-sensitive.
And is there any way possible on the Main Street Master Plan update contingency that we could get an update of exactly what's going on with Parking Lot 1 and Parking Lot Number 10 in terms of the timelines that those groups have with us? What's the, what's the, what's the, that's, that period of time?
Well, the ENP and the LDC.
Those things.
Exclusive negotiating.
The excruciating, excruciating negotiating period.
Yeah, something like that.
So we can just find out. I've had some questions about what, what happened with Headquarters Live, what, what the company's doing, what Devonco's doing with Parking Lot Number 1. So just if you could switch those up for us a little bit tomorrow when you all come in to do it, to do the agenda, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I just have one comment on the dispensary. Looks like it's in the city, because it's right, it's, it's Locust Street is on that corner.
It's 400 Central.
What was it?
This is what I have, 400.
Is that, what's the new Board of Elections building going to be?
Sure, Wes. Sure, Wes.
That's further.
Is that further?
That's further.
So it's closer in?
Yeah, this is right on the corner of Locust Street and Snow Hill Road, right near Pepsi.
So is it the old carpet place?
Or Jax, by Jax?
No, Jax is.
It's on the other side.
On the other side, further down.
So it's after South?
Locust and Snow Hill is where Backstreet is and Johnson McKee.
It's right across the street from Backstreet.
So it's probably the other.
And the Board of Elections.
The other show.
So it is that?
It is the old carpet place.
It's carpet.
Isn't the old, right across from Backstreet?
No, because Johnson McKee's still open.
The original building that the back used to be.
There's a paint shop on Snow Hill, and then there's another that sits back by behind.
That's it right there.
This is directly across the street from Backstreet.
So it is.
So that's where it goes.
Yeah, we need to get that moved.
Yeah.
It's that original building that they used to have the back.
Okay, that's for the discussion.
It's Madison, why are we stigmatizing it?
We want to thank everybody tonight. We are now going, I will now entertain a motion to enter into closed session to discuss a legal matter.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Boda. And a second by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are now in closed session. Thank you everyone for coming.
How was that? Was that nice?
All right, we're back in open session. And I just, we just met in closed session to discuss a legal issue, actually three legal issues, and if there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you.